Good evening, everybody. This is O two. I'm here as the regular business meeting. This is going to township board of supervisors. Please join me in your safe and private meetings.
I'm probably just a lot of things that they were. And still we call other for which you dance.
There are not members present, including myself, Chair David Frank, Vice Chair Robert Movenheim, Supervisor Michael Humber, project manager Julia Halligan, Administrator Courtney Jessica Hodge, and engineer John Fratherson. So, Sir Ron Parisack is present with us via Zoom. Announcements there's standing executive session this evening from five o'clock PM to five thirty seven PM regarding litigation in the cable franchise matter and personnel. The fall leaf pickup is underway through the twenty. And we are still accepting matters of interest for the environmental advisory council to be appointed at every organization meeting next year. On consent agenda, we have the consideration to find the Cooper Mountain Zircon Development Corporation. The consideration to approve the eligibility list for Shawnee for the volunteer service tax credit program, number six oh four. Buying for an ALSA grant on behalf of Delaware Water Gap Fire Department for front. And we will consideration to improve the bill pack for November. A hundred seventy one thousand two hundred eighty one dollars and fourteen cents total amongst the general funds, capital re- rents fund, liquid fuels fund, and fractional escrow. Do I hear a motion on that?
Motion approved.
Motion by Mr. Waddenheim. Put it here a second.
I'll second.
Second, Mr. Out there, discussion.
Uh, on the bill pack, now I think I know the cuts. That's the outfitting of the new truck. I'll see anything else. Um, what is, uh, we're just approving the Shawnee Fire Company, not the others?
They didn't submit this yet, sorry.
Will they, will they issue this in December or how?
Uh, they should come by me in, in that.
Okay, well, one, two, three, four, five, six, seven. Volunteer service.
And you want to ask? All in favor, but I also agree. I mean, I could go after the state driver of France to finally and finally instructed by winters didn't want to feel forgotten. We're going to do that in a minute. Um, reports, emergency services.
Already.
Anybody? Hang on, seven. Chief.
How you doing all?
All right. Thank the time.
Yep, you're very welcome. Uh, here the fellow chief more straight. So a quick report right now. For the most of the fire, fifty calls P L S. So, uh, for I was ten calls. Working in Bush fires the last thirty days, three. Uh, year to date for Marshall Street Fire Company, nine hundred twenty all calls. That's medical and fire. Uh, tax account balance, six three thousand nine hundred seventeen dollars. Reserve fund balance, forty five thousand one hundred forty five dollars. Uh, recent major purchases, um, we applied for the OSFC grant for both fire EMS to be used for debt deduction. Uh, fireside to pay down remaining balance of a hundred twenty thousand over radios. And then not US side to pay down on the Lucas device with a balance of nineteen thousand. But I know what he needs and I have no additional notes. Okay?
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Service.
So, anyone ask? All right, so listener, yeah, Ron, Zoom.
There you go.
Am I unmuted? I can't find my icon.
There you go.
Am I good? Okay. All right. First of all, thank you for allowing me to attend by Zoom. Unfortunately, the third Wednesday is also my solicitor work in Upper Mount Bethel Township for planning commission and they have a number of plans I need to assist with. So I apologize for being here being Zoom and I'll be here till about quarter of seven and then I'll have to excuse myself with your permission. Uh, as to, uh, uh, the, uh, update, as I said at the last meeting, basically the last couple or so weeks, uh, since the last meeting have been taken up with, uh, dealing with the Shawnee Valley PRD two thousand and five plan, reviewing the land development improvements agreement along with various changes to that, reviewing the stormwater agreement. Making sure that's all in order. Uh, I'm not sure where that is in process of signing those documents. Uh, I know that, uh, Julia made some changes to the signature blocks because of some formatting that made signatures a little too tight. I think then, uh, Mr. Uh, Ted, uh, Mr. Ted, Ted also made some changes with respect to the formatting box to make it again a little easier to read and take care of. Uh, and I don't know if the actual letter of credit has been filed yet with the township, but please remember that if we have to call in letters of credit, we need the originals. We can't have copies. So make sure those letter of credits are guarded and put in a safe place so that if we would ever need the original to be brought to a bank, we'd have the original to present. Uh, as opposed to just a copy which won't work. Uh, and other than that, there have been some other odds and ends with respect to emails, et cetera, but that pretty much has been the gist of it since last meeting.
Ron, to give you an update, I spoke with Ted Hunter regarding routing for signatures.
Yes.
We'll search through his parties first and then come to the township for signature, at which point they'll be forwarded to the Mother County Planning Commission and then reported.
Okay, that, that's fine. As long as we have that in, in process and I prefer to have them sign first so that we know they're signed and then we do our end and then file as opposed to signing everything first and then we're left wondering whether they're going to sign. So that's a good mechanism for signature. And if you need me to assist in any way, let me know.
Well, David, thank you.
Thank you. And it's near time.
Thank you, Jacob. Um, the only real activity since last meeting was the continuing work on Post Office Road Bridge. Um, and they had a little difficulty with their shy creed application on the first barrel. Uh, but that's all been resolved, uh, and they got their final layer on today, uh, actually sticker being required. So that's good, great for our interest. And, uh, they're diverting in process of diverting the stream into that finished barrel and they'll start the shakre process on the on the other barrel. The tie rods are in place. The plants are there holding it in place. They'll be tightening down finally once both barrels are finished with shakre.
Awesome. Yeah. That's about all the work from since last.
Yeah, they have an ETA. Or ET.
Ish. Yeah, I think you finish. I would, well, actually it's a, a short week. The fall, they're gonna be mostly done by the end of, um.
Awesome. First of the seven, yeah. I saw an email from you. I mean, we're gonna base into it the next item, but, um.
Yeah, uh, when we put it out the bid, we we were only addressing what Pendot considered the two emergencies, which was the rocks falling all below the the arches and the spandor walls starting to uh, bow outward. Uh, when we put together the plans, we weren't sure if we had to do any work on the outside of the spandor walls. So we put a little extra uh, room in the contract for some shy creed on the outside. I don't think we're going to eat that. Uh, assuming there's some money left over from that line item. I'd like to move it into a line item that isn't on the bid, but still keep the bid where it is to do some, uh, mortar repair on the joints. I think that would help the typing the bridge up quite a bit and uh, help the lines length.
So.
So I would not act on that until uh, we get closer to being finished because we have to measure up. And when you put out bid quantities, you have to make the best they can, but you actually pay on what's actually performed in the field. So.
Right. Alright. Alright, thank you, John. Julia.
Uh, I do not have a report this evening.
I didn't think, but appreciate it anyway. If you have time, I was not here to talk about I A D and state resources.
Yes, yes, good evening. Um, so, uh, there's really no update on I A D. It's in that holding pattern. Uh, at some point, NJ DOT will likely announce there's some meeting about something. Um, but we're not there right now. On six eleven, I'm happy to continue to report that Pendot continues to be great communicating with. You know, it's a, it's the complete opposite of the experience with NJ DOT. You know, they, they sound normal. They act like real people. Um, and they answer your questions and they actually think a little ahead and come up with what you're going to ask next. So on that note, we've been communicating, uh, uh, that there has been no real action on six eleven. And when I say six eleven, it's about the slope. Repairing, mitigating the rock pool hazards on the slope. Um, that came up only because of the, the rocks that came down and that project that had been on the boat for a long time. And that's a big repair. Um, and rebuild to some extent of the, of the actual retaining wall. And thanks to you guys and others, we helped, I do believe, get those projects happening simultaneously and funded simultaneously. Um, so I think we did well there. Um, so that's what we're communicating about. When are, when is that really kicking off? Um, I had hoped uh, that they would be do, would have done what they thought they would be doing. That would be kicking it off beginning of two thousand twenty five. You know, we're coming to the end of twenty five right now and the, the next thing that could happen is hearing what the public, um, uh, public facing meetings would be. Uh, that, that'll happen where the stakeholders will find out when they're going to hear what they're going to hear. So, uh, hopefully by the end of December, uh, the towns will have an opportunity to get briefed. And, and start the prod, start the process required by law, required by the National Environmental Policy Act that requires certain input from all the stakeholders regarding this project on some matters. And also because of the National Historic Preservation Act, um, regarding the way it looks, the way we feel when we go through there, you'll also have meetings specific to, um, that, which is, uh, section one oh six.
Is, is the plant in the hands of the national park?
No, not at all. Uh, the, um, so the, the plant, right, uh, preliminary engineering has begun and, uh, there's a consulting, a, a consult, a consulting company that'll, that'll be running this whole thing. And we, like the national park, will be provided the opportunity to provide input when legally required and legally allowed. So, uh, the National Park Service will have a lot that they have to have say on because though there's layers of protected resources that they have to be the voice about in that area. So they'll have a whole different layer of, um, input, um, than us. But, uh, they have acknowledged that Warren County did ask to be considered a consulting party. And that regarding the historic resources, um, uh, that is at the same level as the National Park Service. So the National Park Service, the tribes, um, uh, uh, Army Corps is at the level of what's called the consulting party and Warren County's asked for that. Really on behalf of all of the municipalities that have, that were all kind of this loose coalition have partnered with one voice. That way, at least if Warren County gets that seat as a consulting party. Well, I'm there, we're there, we can make sure you guys get the seat every possible chance we can.
So, Terrance, you know what happened or what the status is of, uh, the Liberty Trail, which is supposed to run along that road?
Yep, it's still, uh, it's still on paper as, as a proposed plan. So right now, the, the, the national, the September eleventh National Memorial Trail, which is on paper and, and developed in large extent, complete in a lot of areas. It connects the Pentagon, the World Trade Center and, uh, the Flight ninety three memorial. Um, so from New York, it comes through New Jersey, then down, down the Pollenskill Trail in Columbia, Nolton, and connects with the Portland Columbia Footbridge and runs over to Portland. The New Jersey section is complete. Where it then doesn't, um, on paper, it exists from Portland through the Delaware Water Gap along six eleven, which is why, why you got to ask. So very conscious of that. And I, I assure you, it's, it's right here. If we have, uh, we have the opportunity to uh, have the seat at these tables. You can't imagine if we don't get that in this design, when will it ever be?
Right.
Right? Um, and the other, the other, uh, uh, fun, good news is, uh, Nolton Mayor Adel Stars, yeah, she started, uh, the fight to preserve, to not have the NJ DOT put up those fences and do the damage like they did in Nolton Town down on Route forty six. Um, she retired out three years ago. Uh, she was just elected back in and in Jersey, we don't elect our mayors. It's like you, the, the committee, we have a committee of five. They vote on who the mayor would be. So she was just, uh, reelected as a committee person. Um, and she'll be, I, I, I think she'll be back in the trenches with us, which I'm sure you'll find.
Awesome.
So that's it. Thank you. I will be back. So have a great Thanksgiving, unless there's something major. Then I'll be back.
Always hope.
Yeah, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Good day.
I'm fine. On the environmental advisory council, they presented to us at our last meeting on the official map update, just wanted to provide in, uh, who, Alex, uh, saying so that they submitted the letter for the, uh, technical assistance for the official map update. So that now will be in process. They received that. Supervisor Thomas, anything from you, Michael, Robert?
I think for me, I don't have anything to add.
Okay.
Thank you.
Now, well, business under new business, uh, I'm going to entertain a motion at table, uh, change order number one regarding post office for the bridge. Uh, as that, even if I can do it, do that motion.
Motion to table.
Mr. Waddenheim. I'll second.
I'll second, second.
Session. All in favor?
All right.
All right.
Okay.
So now we have a presentation on twenty twenty six budget, uh, Bonnie and Frank, ready and available.
Thank you. So here's what you hear if they've ever met me. My name is Bonnie, I'm the financial director here. And tonight I'm going to present to our supervisors and the board, set draft of our twenty twenty six budget.
I thought I would start with just going over some of the twenty twenty five achievements that we made in the twenty twenty five this full year.
There's like an effect for each thing. So you could hit twice potentially.
We were able to provide LS grant funding to firing in that's three hundred and forty eight thousand dollars. We increased our administrative support resulting in twenty nine enforcement notices. And we served six point two miles of roads in-house, giving two point seven miles and chip seal on three point five miles. In addition to that, I'm excited to say with proper finances, the management of the finances, we were able to add to our capital fixed asset three new vehicles, two new ones and one new used vehicle, as you can see on the screen, two dump trucks and a Ford F one fifth. The next screen is basically our budgeting process. So it just gives you a guideline as to what the dates are and how the budget is developed to prove to advertise. I thought it important to give you an assessment trends of the tactics throughout the years.
Yeah, we don't get the new one until.
You're back, you're back, listen.
Zoom, the new one for this coming year in town, hold the end of this.
Correct. Which is interesting because we activated budgets on the tactics from the twenty twenty five year. It's kind of a guess.
So that's just an estimate?
These are actuals for twenty two, twenty three, twenty four, twenty five, but I don't get the twenty twenty six. Until the end of November, you know, the end of November. So the twenty six budget is based on technically twenty twenty five ass revenue numbers. So I don't know what the twenty twenty six is going to be. Alright. The good news is there's no change in the tax village for twenty twenty six. The next page, I basically have given a summarization page of some of the major categories in the budget, the revenue categories and the expenditure categories. Overall, one, two, three, four, five, five, we have five funds that we have, which is our general fund, our liquid fuels fund, our capital improvements and grant fund, our fire tax and our EMS tax funds. Um, I don't know if you can really see this, but I guess the next page is just some graphs and I've highlighted some of the important items. I guess the one you're probably more interested in is the general, the general fund because liquid fuels is basically a tax that we get from Pendot, the money comes in and then we disperse it out, the paving of the roads and road maintenance. Firing EMS tax, the same thing with the firing EMS tax that is they, we basically bring in, come in and we disperse it to the fire and the EMS fund that we see as it is.
Bonnie, can you maybe just very briefly explain what each of these revenue sources are?
Revenue, so, I am through this here in the state, absolutely. Okay, if you notice on this screen, I gave a graph with the primary, um, revenue sources are. Our primary revenue sources are real estate taxes. And we're estimating in twenty twenty six, we're going to do about one point two seven million dollars, which represents forty point one percent of the revenue that the township is going to bring in. Um, the next high one is going to be our Henry County House, which is about a million dollars, which represents thirty one point five percent. So we have quite a few residents that work in this township and that's where that comes from. Um, transfer fees or real estate transfer fees. Transfer fees, that's about two hundred and fifty thousand dollars, which is seven point nine percent. Um, franchise fees is the cable franchise fee, which is about a hundred and fifteen thousand is three point six percent. And the remainder is miscellaneous, um, which is interest, um, into government revenues, township cleanup. And it's about three hundred eighty six thousand and it's twelve point two percent.
And so earned income tax, just so to know, same age that is for everyone that works here, regardless of whether they live here.
That's correct. And your local services taxes, people that work in this township.
Right.
And it's here, right?
Okay, the next slide represents expenditures. Thanks. Um, but we have to pay stuff out. So you'll see in here, our government expenditures is about, we'll go to the high ones. The high ones, as you'll see from the chart, is our public works and our roads department. That's a given. That's where most of the money is spent on our roads and maintenance. And that's about seven hundred and twenty some thousand dollars and that represents twenty seven percent of the expenditures. Then we get into the local government expenses, which is about five hundred and ten percent. And that's about sixteen point four percent, trying to add them together. Um, insurance and benefits is about six hundred and two thousand dollars. Um, that's about nineteen percent. Uh, culture and recreation, we're looking at about two point two, uh, thousand dollars. And that's about seven point four percent. Um, debt services, that's our bond debt service and that's two hundred and forty two thousand dollars is about seven point six percent. Miscellaneous, again, cleanup of grove expenses, which is our multi municipal composting facility. Um, snow removal and the sport expenses, that's about four hundred and twenty three thousand, which is thirteen point three percent of our expense budget. The next item is on liquid fuels. Again, that's the tax on gas that we get from Pendot that we put back into the roads. And we're anticipating that I've already gotten notice on now of what we're going to receive in the twenty six year. And we've already reported, so we'll be giving that money in March of twenty twenty six. And it's two hundred and seventy six thousand, the hundred ninety four dollars. And liquid fuels and then we'd also get thirty five thousand, four hundred and eighty dollars from Pendot, which is turnback funds, which means if we maintain some of their roads, they pay us to do that. So we get about thirty five thousand, four hundred and eighty for that. Interest on the account is about sixty five hundred dollars. So projected total revenues, three hundred and eighty, it's every so eleven. And that'll go back into roads and road movements.
We get them. Twenty seven, or the census out. We get it all honestly.
Yeah, yeah.
At the beginning of, like in January.
Um, March. If I get the reports in, Pendot, into the state, um, and I get that in by getting in November, um, they will have the money in our bank in March.
Okay, that's why we can have a lot of earnings in the town, okay?
Yeah, and then in twenty twenty five, Smithville will report all the paving in-house to increase our first pump efficiency. We announced that last year. The township plans to do the same thing in twenty twenty six. So what that allowed us to do is we spent the same money, but we were allowed to pave more roads. Um, so that turned out to be very beneficial for us by the way. Um, the roads that they expect to pave and upgrade, that is paving, it shoulders. Um, there's a lot of different maintenance that goes into the roads, chip seal. Um, the roads that they're planning on doing next year are going to be Ginger Lane, Reservoir Road, Gapview Drive and the Vertures Development. Again, that's not written in stone. That's what they plan on doing. Things could change depending on something that's another road. That's his priority over these roads. Firing EMS tax, those are our firing EMS towers that are the taxes that are paying into that. We're looking at twenty twenty six EMS taxes, going to bring in a hundred eighty eight thousand, four hundred and thirty two dollars. Our projected twenty twenty six fire tax is three hundred and forty five thousand, two hundred and twenty six. Our emergency medical service providers, if you're not familiar, is Bushville Emergency Corps, Marshall Street Fire Company, the internet, and suburban EMS. Our fire service providers are Delaware Water Gap, Marshall Street Fire, and Shawnee Fire. We will rate that they, we are collecting for the fire taxes, point five five dollars. I mean, that's not clear change. That's going to stay the same. Um, the EMS tax rate is point three oh dollars. That's not going to change. That's going to stay the same. And then we're going to go into our capital, uh, improvement and grants projects. And what I did was we came up with, well, we put together a budget of what our capital expenditures and the projects were going to be for the twenty twenty six year. Um, what we plan on doing is we are transferring from general fund two hundred thousand dollars every year. So that that money is guaranteed to go back into the community and to um our capital improvements here. So with the sale of fixed assets, because we also have come to the conclusion, we like to upgrade at least a piece of equipment. My goal is every year, upgrade a piece of equipment, so that we're not stopped one year with five pieces of machinery that are now working and we have to get one of them one year. So we're planning on upgrading one piece of equipment, doesn't mean a brand new piece of equipment, but it means the sale of something we have and the upgrading of something new. So at least it's something new is going into our fleet, new to us every year. Um, so with that, I've also written a budget that they have to sell some stuff in order to upgrade to get something new. So we projected that they're gonna sell about thirty thousand dollars of fixed assets. Um, so that's gonna lead us in with our interest, so we're gonna have two hundred and thirty four thousand in capital improvements that we're gonna be making. In that, I put a list of what we're planning on spending that money on, so we have some new thought computers, we have, we need a new photocopy machine. Um, bigger items are, we have to upgrade our elevator doors, the glides on the tours, because they have to be, that has to be upgraded, that's about thirty two thousand. Um, we have a D P W water line, a main water line out in the parking lot that needs to be relocated. We were aware of that this year, but we're gonna do it next year, we were able to keep it along, but that has to be done. Um, we have some drainage, we have park fencing, we have forty thousand for a new piece of equipment, a new used piece of equipment for public works. Um, again, they're gonna sell some assets to get that new used equipment. And then we have a payment on the new chart. Um, that we took from ourselves, we didn't have any financing, we don't have any loans out, we don't have any. Um, and that's about it, we got about sixteen five to match for some grant funds that we have to put matching at the E M S grants that we're gonna get for some items. Then we go into the grant summary, this is Julia, our grant queen, she does our grants and gets what the expected against, these are some of the grants that we're gonna go for in twenty twenty six. The expected uh expense is in the first column and then the expected income that we're gonna get in for these grants is in the second column. So bottom line at the very end, our expected expense, I'll give you a few items, it's waterfront loans, part vision loss trail, finish that, the rivers that match the site brand. Fremont Bridge Drive, uh Marshall's Falls Phase Two, um et cetera, et cetera. Our expected expense is gonna be about six hundred and eighty seven thousand, one hundred and twenty five dollars. We're gonna be getting in grant on six hundred and seventy nine dollars in one twenty five, one hundred and twenty five. So basically, it's gonna cost us about eight thousand dollars to get six hundred and seventy nine thousand dollars worth of grant improvements.
This thing, this is just grants we know that we're already getting?
That is correct, there are, um, all of them have already been awarded and we have signed contracts for them, sure.
So no risk of that is?
No, that this is all already set in stone and we've already committed to this money, signed off on agreements with these things are active.
And the way we've always, oh, I'm asking this, that means the way we do budgets is, if there's new grants we wanna pursue, that's sort of over and above the budget typically?
The answer to that question is actually two-part, um, there are two kinds of grants, if you will. Um, the first one is like the open mountain visitor's year grant, where we apply for it in January of the year. And we're required to lead it by December of that year, so the entire grant is within the year. Um, because we have no way to prompt that we'll be awarded those funds, those funds are not put in the budget as a plan to receive them or whatnot. Um, that is why we have that line item that Bonnie mentioned in the capital improvements fund for annual grant matches. That's what allows us to go after one of the nature of.
Smaller one, I mean, those are smaller.
Yeah, yeah, they're smaller, um.
So big, uh, we're going after a larger three hundred thousand dollar grant, I was gonna ask, if that's sixteen five, it's probably not enough for a match for, if we have to pursue a three hundred thousand dollar grant or something.
Correct, and that is, leads me to the second type of grant. Um, when we're uh discussing things like the L S A grant that hopefully are due for a county portion by September thirtieth of every year. Those are awarded in the year after that.
Okay.
So what we would do then, if I apply for grants in twenty twenty six, you'll see those branch rent match commitment letters reflected in the twenty twenty seven budget.
Okay, uh, does that mean we didn't get any of those this year?
Uh, they haven't announced them yet.
Okay, so what happens when they announce them in September? What?
February.
They don't announce till May?
Yeah.
Okay.
We have put those funds that township is responsible for in the budget already for twenty twenty six.
Okay.
Um, as far as the fire companies and whatnot, uh especially the, most of the L S A grants that we apply.
Our companies, that game is.
Right, and we're not responsible for covering those matches, so they'll need to reflect that.
The other thing to note too, in case you didn't already say it, is that a lot of the D C E D grants that we have. Uh, can be used the ma- as the match against the D C N R grants.
Okay.
So they don't incur additional risk.
So you, you'd get both of them before it proceeded?
Yeah, um, and there's actually a perfect example on this slide, the bottom two grants related to Marshall's Falls. The D C E D statewide is being used as a match against the Marshall's Falls D C N R C two.
Okay. Should we mention the two grants from the alignment of uh, realignment of Franklinville Road, under, it was a multimodal grant in a Keystone, weirdly grand?
Those were not done in the name of the township, and as a result, we put it up for them, uh, are not done there.
Even though it's our road?
Even though it's our road, because we don't have any control of the grant funds or anything, we've got a little several.
It's a developer.
That's correct.
Mission playing, turn the tables.
Okay, thank you, awesome. Bonnie, just as, as a note, um, real global figures may change for next year because we're now discussing. We have, how we take the over some of the responsibility.
Okay.
Could everybody talk up a little bit?
Yeah, I was thinking the same thing.
I mean, this is. We can't hear anything, I share.
I agree.
Um.
I agree with you. We need more mics here and we need more speakers.
Wow.
Good idea. Put that in the budget.
Bonnie, for you it is.
I'm tight.
Okay.
Okay, the next slide is showing the twenty twenty six tax rates on our villages, there's no change in any of that for the twenty twenty six year. Um, we thought to put in a twenty twenty six tax bill, to show, just on an average tax bill with the amounts with the military would be. That is it.
Bonnie, I'm sorry, can I ask a question?
Go ahead, John.
Uh, did I hear anything about salaries general on administration S P N A? Does anybody put that in the line items?
Yes.
Oh, yeah, so I'm sorry, I just missed it, I guess.
Yeah. Um, yeah. The general government staff expenses, two hundred ninety one thousand, five hundred and seventy seven dollars, which represents nine point two percent of our expenses.
Nine point two, maybe, okay, about around ten percent, yeah.
That doesn't include the road proof, obviously.
No, that's general.
Road proof is different.
Right.
So who does that include?
Um, includes all the administrative staff, um. For the township.
Kind of like, like supervisors and Julia, uh.
Yes.
I totally agree. Uh, does that include our staff?
It does. Mm-hmm.
And how much is the stipend for this year?
Uh, twenty five hundred dollars of supervision.
So, Jacob, you're not following the Act twenty twenty four?
We did not pass an ordinance to increase it, no.
The vast, um, there's any uh passive law allowing townships to increase that to four thousand dollars, but we have not done that.
That's forty five hundred, not four thousand.
Four, four hundred.
Running township, depending on the size, I don't think stuff thing was.
Well, depends on my.
That's, that's, that's our size.
Yeah. Little Smith Fields, I think, can be six or seven thousand, although.
That would, that requires some performance, right?
And it only applies to the, the next term, uh, so it wouldn't apply to either of these two, so we didn't do that.
So next term meaning six years later?
At any point. Two years will be another election.
Yeah, at any point, you know, the next group can do that, that's not something we discuss doing at all. So, since we're not gonna pass it and we're not even trying to, it won't take, you know.
Okay, what about the cap hours for the supervisors?
That you're not capped, just like they were not this year.
But your previous years, you had seven hundred and seventy cap hours, you introduced it, and you never made a statement in public that you knocked into it. So automatically, it over. Overtakes that seven hundred and seventy hours, I can need to follow.
It's not every year.
I spoke with auditors, with the local auditors, that are right now currently elect, you know, that are still in.
Correct.
So those seven hundred and seventy hours are in that, that number that she just gave us? Or is that different?
No.
I think all government, all salaries would be in there. Whether it be a supervisor that gets hired for a job, or whether it be Julia or Bonnie or, uh, any of that.
So what was your reasoning for creating that seven hundred and seventy cap hours?
All three supervisors.
For two years, you did it, and after that, you decided not to do it.
All three supervisors worked at the time, that's no longer the case.
Okay, so it's o- it's okay for one supervisor to go charge as much as I want?
That's not how that works either, but I'm not gonna get in that debate with you.
Well, I, I would actually like to know also.
Fantastic, we'll see you in January.
At, at the January meeting is when any um positions are assigned, and the auditors do set a limit on the rate. That a supervisor can receive if employed by the township, for instance, most townships, I think, second-class townships. I shouldn't say most, us, when we go to P S A, it seems that every township supervisor, you wrote master or works on improve, so they can be.
Or a webmaster.
Or a webmaster, yeah, you can be assigned a different role, it is intended to be specific and separate from the supervisor position, so. It is important that those, those roles are delineated as employment for a particular activity and not as a supervisor for which, as we've heard. We get twenty five hundred dollars a year, um, yeah, as in this role, for this role.
Okay.
And that, that will be discussed at the January reorg meeting. To the, to the what?
January fifth.
I, I appreciate you explaining that, Michael, in a nice, a nice, a nice manner, because Jacob was really quick to shut it down and.
Sounds.
Very, very sarky with, with the people and the public and, and who he's here for.
Yeah, speaking of roles, I think Jacob, you forget who you represent sitting there.
I don't know, I don't know about that, but let's uh, let's keep uh.
It is, it is true, it's, it, it kind of fall into this number and it's not a decision that's made today in many ways, it's made in January.
And the others?
Bonnie, in process, this is, we're not approving this, it starts getting advertised today, is that correct? Right, so twenty days, and it'll be approved December.
December. Uh, and, and just the um brief correction, it won't be advertised starting today, because we need to send it to like the records. It's generally about when you have the right here.
And you're all authorized to advertise it.
November twenty sixth, then December third, it'll be published and we'll also put it online.
But when do you have to submit the budget to the state?
By the end of the year, but our last meeting is December seventeenth, so that's when we're going to adopt it. Do you want to hear a motion to authorize the advertisement budgets?
Motion.
Mr. Wellingheim, do you want to hear a second?
Second.
Second, start there. Discussion. All in favor?
Good.
Alright. And public comment? Thank you very much.
There's thought.
Welcome, thank you.
Hey, I'm Jerry, excuse me, D J C. I'm from Bell Smithville Township. Good evening, members of township board, neighbors and community leaders, thank you for giving me an opportunity to speak. I am here to talk about something far bigger than Motocross Track, I'm here to talk about. A place that has become a lifeline for many people in our community, a place called the Back Nine. For some, it may just look like a track, but to those of us who have been a part of it. The Back Nine is a space where people, kids, adults alike find healing purpose and belonging. It's a place where the noise of their bikes is often quieter than the storms people carry inside themselves. Life brings trauma, it brings loss, uncertainty and struggle that many people quietly bear. And for years, the Back Nine has been one of the few places in this community that, that weight feels lighter. The people behind the Back Nine don't just run a track, they nurture a community, they support broken people. Give hope to those who feel hopeless and build the culture of encouragement, mentorship and healthy challenge. Adults who once felt like they had nothing left to lose found purpose again. They found structure, friendship and a reason to keep trying. Young people, kids, who could as, so easily be pulled towards negative coping mechanisms, found a safe, positive supervised outlet. They learned discipline, responsibility, confidence and resilience. When a community loses outlets like this, the energy doesn't disappear, it's sim- it simply shifts. And I fear where it will go if the Back Nine remains closed. Without healthy, without healthy coping mechanisms, without a place where young people can channel their energy and emotions. We risk seeing the turn, we risk seeing it turn to far more dangerous alternatives. One that truly, ones that truly hurt the community. We often talk about, uh, wanting to support mental health, we talk about wanting to invest in the youth, we talk about keeping people on the right path. The Back Nine is that investment, it is a place where personal growth happens daily, where people build each other up, challenge themselves and find strength. They didn't know they had. This track doesn't divide the community, it strengthens it. It gives people a sense of belonging, connection and purpose, and I am generally afraid of the future of our community. If we allow such a meaningful healing space to stay posed. I'm asking on behalf of the young people, we need a positive place to grow, on behalf of the adults who have found it working again. And on behalf of everyone who has been shaped for better by the Back Nine, to allow this track to reorder, thank you.
Uh, Mr. Chair, I, I'm gonna have to jump off to get to my upper Mount Bethel Township meeting, so I'm gonna. Say goodbye to everyone, uh, however, uh, I don't believe we'll talk again, so. The board and all the members of the audience have a good Thanksgiving, and that being said, I will see you guys on the next go around.
Thanks, Ron.
Okay.
Be good.
Uh, yeah. How much of our budget is used to collect leaves? And why do we collect leaves? We live in a rural, rural area, it's just a general question, why, why are we even doing that?
I don't know the exact percentage off the top of my head, but I mean, it's good yard management and.
The best yard management is to leave them there and mulch them in the yard, it's the best nitrogen you can give in your yard.
I mean, I can certainly appreciate that, but I, I think that, I, I.
I can't give you the exact specifics, uh, but the short answer is D E P mandates it.
They mandate that we pick up leaves?
Yes. Which is why they give us grants, like the Act one oh one section nine, to buy the equipment that we need to do it.
That's, that's, that's on the road, so, right, is it not correct?
And.
On the road, but what we're doing with development and everything else.
Any, any public township-owned road, we will collect the leaves on. It helps maintain the swales and helps prevent for washouts as well, because once the swales get clogged. Water starts moving over the roads and it keeps stormwater, where stormwaters.
Okay, I just thought maybe we could use that time and energy someplace else.
I haven't grown leaves in my yard, they're all over the place, I mulch mine.
Fair enough, there you go.
We'll get you a percentage, we'll try to figure that out.
My township, I'm in the community, I mean, I provide me from. And I have to pay for that in my taxes to the township, so I don't get the collection, and I still pay for it.
Oh, I'm the same, Bonnie, I don't get nothing from the township. And they all know how I feel about that. Okay, um. For budget sessions. First, regarding the twenty twenty five, twenty twenty six budgets. Why there are no budget work sessions when just two years ago residents were fully included in the process? I don't, and I'd like to know the reason why, and um, you guys were very. Sitting down with the, with the people and reviewing the budget, working with the public and all that, um, it hasn't happened. And we only get one presentation and there isn't that much opportunity for publics to participate or questions. Um, it hasn't happened, and we only get one presentation, and there isn't that much opportunity for publics to participate or questions. And for this past two years. All of a sudden, we are restricted in discussing employee salaries, which are funded entirely by the taxpayers. Before, every line item, we knew who was getting what, now you're just putting one lump sum. And we can't know who's paying getting what, we don't know how much Julia's getting paid, we don't know how much. The roadmaster's getting paid, we had the detailed detail, which everyone liked it. But you guys changed it, why?
I just wanna add one thing, just so you know.
Pause it, pause the minutes please.
You can, yeah, pause. Uh. Budget isn't the, even if you did have the exact line, budget isn't the salary amounts, just so you know, there's always uh, because. Home surveys haven't happened yet, if there's, so there's like a little cushion. Um, it's always in every budget, just wanna let you know, so even if you have a line there. One thing, it's not great, it's like, oh my goodness, that's how much our person's getting, well, they might not get that, that includes possible overtime for the staff that can make progress, there's there's.
Yeah, but if they're on salary, I think the taxpayers have every right to know.
Oh, you have the right to know, I'm just saying, like, what I mean, the budget is not necessarily.
The salary don't get OT at all.
Correct, but they don't, but they haven't necessarily been allocated.
First to him, to his right to know, that's how you can ask them.
You can definitely get that.
But before it wasn't like that, we didn't have to fill out a right to know, take a.
Yeah, I could, I don't think, correct? I don't think it's fair that people are made to be political footballers, especially people that aren't collective officials, even if they're appointed.
No, and then um, like I said, the budget transmission is not optional anymore. Um, I think the residents deserve some openness with it. Based on the previous years, um, supervisor performance. I'm not gonna name anybody, but I've watched multiple terms of elected officials as supervisors, I observe them. I believe that there is a lot of decline in the supervisor's positions. Responses from residents, um, leadership, on certain board members. Residents feel decisions are prioritizing over development interests instead of community concerns. There are community observations, not accusations, but they deserve to be acknowledged. Um, regarding the back nine matters, I've been following it, I've read the court dockets on C track. Numerous, numerous pages, I spent hours and weeks reading it, trying to catch up to it, speaking to them. Hearing what you guys have to say, um, Judge Zulik recognized their status based on the deed. And that recognition still stands, they are a resort, it hasn't been taken away from their deed, they are still resort status. Um, they've operated nearly a decade, starting with a small track and later expanding, something many businesses routinely do. But many of us do not understand why this expansion has turned into years of legal conflict. That I like to know too, um. With the tax increases, you guys didn't increase the taxes this year, I'm happy, but. Probably next year, probably will, because of the ongoing legal battles that the township has. And I'm pretty sure the township people, the residents, everyone is gonna suffer next year, um. Unnecessary spending, and the salaries is probably the highest, the high salaries that you guys are paying. The people that don't deserve it.
Thank you.
I've been to a lot of motocross tracks and back nine, it's definitely by far the most family oriented, and it's not any of that like party nonsense, we see it some of these other racetracks.
Hello. Just wanna say a few things, um. We gave a thousand heartfelt testimonies. You guys don't wanna hear, you've been fighting, come here for months. What are the Poconos known for? Outdoor activities, right? Right? Yes, in the Smithfield Township, we have a snake and animal farm, we got uh, Johnny. Kayaking, the kayaking business right next to Snake and Animal Farm. What about outdoor riding? What about motocross? We need that. Hold on, will you shake your head?
No, I'm saying I approve.
The Poconos is made for outdoor activities, what's the issue? Our zone is correct. We we comply with your rules, we we're very nice people, you look at us like monsters, if you poke the bear at the same spot, obviously you're gonna get a reaction, correct? Yes or no?
I'm not gonna comment on a, on a court case.
Okay, okay, this is human, human interaction, you know what I mean, we all live in this community together. Alright?
You you can comment. I'm here anytime, you can keep, you know, utilizing your time.
Relax, this is my time. Alright? Poconos are made for outdoor activities. Let's come to a resolution and dissolve this injunction, please. You're not gonna get rid of us. Like she said, the resort, the deed. It's it's a zone correctly.
I'm not gonna answer you. Because this is a pending court case, and I will not say anything.
You can.
Okay, whether you answer me or not, I just wanted to.
You can express your opinion, but we don't have to answer you.
That's real nice. That's real nice.
He's a real man.
That's real nice, man.
One at a time.
God bless you.
One at a time.
God bless you, man. You need a.
I'm just gonna sit.
You know, okay.
Yeah, um, obviously, we all know how I feel about back nine and how important I feel about that. Um, I'd also like to point out um, that I feel like. As a group here, that you aren't being very transparent to the public. There's a lot of things that are getting slipped under the noses and not um, as webmaster. Jacob posted properly or explained properly to public on all of the official pages. And I think that that would be something, maybe you could hire somebody to look into or something of that, because this is. Any page that's officially a township page should be transparent. We should be able to easily find information. Where wherever it's located, if you're claiming an official township page. Information should be easily located for any resident at the tip of their fingers. I will say that there are a lot of movements and a lot of the younger gen- generation that are not used to looking things. In five, I have to go sometimes five, six, seven different websites to figure out what you guys are doing. And it's not fair. It should be something that's public information on every page that's easily accessible. I would appreciate open transparency for public officials for a board that is doing things. In, like it or not, Jacob, you guys recommend, you you represent my voice. You represent everybody's voice in here, and if you won't listen to our voice, how are we represented? That's what I wanna know. If you have to listen to everybody, not just the developers who are paying you to inspect the properties and whatnot. I want you to represent everybody's voice in here, every single bodies, whether you like their opinion or not, your job is to represent us. It should be transparent. I think it's something that it should be looked into.
What specifically haven't you been able to find on the website?
I'm telling you that you don't post all of the information and you slide stuff under the nose.
Well, just give me a tell.
I will give you an example right now, a couple of weeks ago, when you passed the dad center. Um, whatever bill, whatever that is. You sat here and you stood stood in this room, it's available on YouTube. It is available, the clip, you stood in this room and you said, it's not likely. The way we wrote it, it's definitely, definitely probably not gonna happen. And then you went into the planning meeting and explained to us that you've already been planning it for an entire year. It was behind the scenes, yes you did, yes you did, and those are also available on.
Not only that, I will say right here, I think those data centers are not likely here, okay?
Okay, then why, why did they tell us in the planning center that they're already planning it?
They can plan that.
And I understand, my time's up, I'm being respectful. I'm being respectful.
People are free to propose what they want, but that doesn't make it likely or not likely. We needed an ordinance in order to protect the community from that. Type of use, because as it was defined previously, it could have been basically anywhere in the commercial corridor, no setbacks. No noise regs, no facades. Nothing about the roads, they're huge.
And now they're, they're going to not only um, upset your noise ordinance, but they are coming. They told us in the planning meeting, did you watch it?
Yeah, I'm familiar, look.
Okay, so.
They want it, but that doesn't mean it's going to be approved, they have a lot to comply with. Our ordinance is fairly strong, it's one of the strongest in the state. And we stand by that, we're about to make it even tougher in a couple of weeks at the planning commission. So that's what they were discussing at the last meeting.
I I think you're allowed to, Pete, just to come and say, I'm putting a data center there on the twenty acres.
We didn't allow him to do that, it's a forbidden.
But he shouldn't, he doesn't have the okay from you guys, he shouldn't come here and present it and make, and drop an atomic bomb.
She would have told him in no uncertain terms, you're not presenting your sketch plan, you're free to go and public comment, and that's what he did. So that's how it works.
Oh, it's just fishy that Robert shows back up right as the data center ordinance is finally finalized after not being at work for four months.
That's nice, you wanna make a comment?
And then he gets there, and now all of a sudden, it's.
He's both saying whether he's on Zoom or he's here, doesn't change him. And I don't.
It does.
Nope, one at a time, and I know, you make me.
I don't understand.
You made your comment, sir, but but I'm not.
And I don't understand the fact that. You guys are making such a big fuss about our motocross track, we bring in dollars to this community, that's what it's about, it's a four hundred acre resort, they pay taxes. Right, after, after, after when the, after when the data is done writing, go to all the restaurants, what do you see? Bikes on the back. It brings in money, that's what you want for the community.
There's literally a motorcycle bar right up the street.
Correct or not? Correct or not? You guys got the wrong Pete, this is a passion project, not a profit project, we're not doing this to make.
Money.
You know what I mean, we're not doing this to raking the money, we're doing this for people to hang out, that's what we do.
It's a non-profit.
You gonna say what I'm saying?
A running shit non-profit.
Thank you for your comment.
It's the wrong Pete, it's a wrong Pete, it's a passion project, not a profit project.
Thank you.
They're already in the hole for hundreds of thousands of dollars, that was money spent already there?
Thank you.
Jacob, what?
Anyone else bring your public comment, we've had a lot of people come to the.
Think, think, guys, think, you're sitting there and think, seriously.
But think about it, how, what did you want?
Is there anyone else that wants to speak before she goes second, we, during the meeting?
No, the meeting's on adjourned, people don't wanna speak.
Okay, Gene.
Um, one thing I'd like to add about the guy with the data center is, he admitted that he didn't have anybody to. To build the data center and to, and that, he had to find somebody that would actually want to build the data center. So just trying to get it, there there, what he's trying to do is package it so it's all ready for somebody, but. You know, I just can't imagine anybody wanting to build a data center on, on the, it's probably that small.
But Gene, but he did state that a certain important developer did not give the name, he. He said, he said, gave that green, green space, whatever LLC, he named the company that was gonna do. And he signed a contract too with them, he said.
Can I make a comment? Go ahead, Mike.
Yeah, sure.
Um. So, here's the thing, we passed an ordinance not to make it impossible to have a data center, because that's actually illegal, you can't do that. We may.
Why is that illegal?
You can't make, um, you can't pass ordinances that mean that a certain use is not allowed anywhere in the township.
Ah.
I know that, and and our. Motocross facility is allowed in the ED zone, it is allowed in the ED.
Since when?
It's always, if you look in our ordinances, you can have it in our.
It's also allowed in our, in in a resort zone.
Okay, so let me just finish on this point, so you can't make it, so for us to say, it's unlikely to happen, or it's, for us it's not gonna happen. We can't say that, because that would be illegal. We, we felt, we put, we knew this was coming up, because you presented it already a year ago. Um, as a concept, in a, in a public meeting, there was nothing sort of hidden there. He had this idea, so it was like, well, we better get an ordinance pretty quickly, we took them all, ordinance, we actually made it stronger. We've been advised by many people, this is one of the strongest in the state so far, we've been told by people. Good thing you're on top, because lots of townships don't have it yet. So the reality is, from my perspective, if he does it, and he meets all the criteria. We've done a pretty good job of protecting residents, and I will say, he did present this to, to, he presented it to me. And I said, now look at this, your setbacks fifty feet, you can't do that. No. If you don't have your setback, the two hundred feet, I don't see how we're gonna pass it, said, this crowd is not gonna have it, giving you a variance. To do these things, or sorry, we can do a variance, be a waiver.
Right.
Um, or you'd have to go before the zoning board to get a variance. And you'd never get one from the, for setbacks, you'll never get it from the zoning board. So I'm just telling you, I mean, I think he presented, I don't know what he presented, actually, did he have like a, with a building like cut off from the side, one area?
He has something on there.
He just spoke.
He just spoke, yeah.
He just spoke, okay, because I know it was like, listen, this part of this building, not possible, I'm just telling you, it has to be allowed somewhere, we have some of the most strict criteria in the state. This is a plot of land where it is feasibly possible, because it's only allowed in M one ED, I don't think it's gonna end up in M one, because there's too much wetland. In our, in our, our M one. So, but, does someone wanna build two hundred fifty thousand square foot one, these, most of the time they want million square feet of these things.
Right.
So I don't think it's gonna.
To his original, go back fifteen years. When he was a kindergarten, when he came. And the land is still a disaster, war zone. Shopping mall, it was gonna be an outlet, like, he keeps changing his plans.
We all want that, but you know, if the shopping mall don't come, they won't come.
And like, I'd rather have a shopping mall, a little bit, a few restaurants, a tail.
We all want that.
So.
Central warehouse.
The data centers are getting smaller and smaller as they go, and it's gonna happen, there's gonna be enough money at some point that it's gonna happen there, there's already been. Talks with with Penn Data for doing one possibly, I I believe it was Penn Data, I'm not sure, at Mount Manor. Uh, and I I think, um, I I don't, I don't know where. Why, why we're doing anything to allow any type of data center here, because it's not beneficial to anyone, no matter what the developer says.
It doesn't preserve.
The law says that we have to provide for every type of use.
It's somewhere in the township.
Correct.
That's the way the law works.
So we said, what about our use?
You can have, you can have motorically in the ED zone or in the RC zone, it is in our.
What's the RC zone?
So what, how come?
It's a residential.
So the, when Archer B J K project came to the township there. To zoning board, they requested, Mount Manor requested, for their zoning to be changed to ED. How come you guys listened to a petition and did not allow it, because you know, this said parcel, five hundred acres. You're never gonna have, allow that to do an ED, because you're gonna have always someone making a petition.
I wasn't surprised.
I know you were not, but you were.
I voted to, you know, in favor of rezoning it on the planning commission, and. The board of supervisors voted against it, it was a split vote on the planning commission, and then three oh on supervisors not to rezone it. We're not obligated to answer anyone's petition to rezone something, we can just say, no, that's a legislative act, you don't have a right to rezone.
Are you sure?
You sure did a good job of rezoning, I'll have nowhere.
So haven't changed the zoning that, that's in fact what we were just talking about.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, thank you for that.
Start over.
You should not be too loud.
Yeah, yeah.
Um, so. Obviously, you guys know, man, I don't need an introduction, uh, back nine is still kind of the only thing in this town. That anyone, the public cares about. There's been nothing over the past three or four years that has anyone in any part of this town showed any interest. Like the back nine. You guys all sat up here, especially you, little fucking weasel.
Alright, we're not.
I'm going to, I'm going to.
We're not gonna.
It's actually on my right, so, um.
That's your warning, or what?
And anyhow, um. It it, I've never seen someone turn their back to the public so much, when this is what the public wants. The public wants, you, I know you got met with twelve people who get special meetings and special privileges up here. Tammy's on speed dial with you, bro, she calls you, she texts you, she instantly in your pocket. I can't get a call back, I can't get anything back from you, because you're too much of a pussy, and you sit there, and you sit there, and you say, I'm not gonna talk on that, I'm not gonna talk on that. When you work for, you work for the public, you work for the public, you work for us. You work for the public. You work for us. I don't know who you think you are, but you work for us. And when you sit there and say, I'm not gonna talk about it, you actually can talk about it. You can talk about it. You're allowed to talk about it. You're very well allowed to talk.
Don't tell me what I'm allowed.
Actually, I'm gonna tell you what you're allowed. You're a public servant. I'm going to tell you. I'm going to tell her to take this silly hat off and talk. Oh, actually, you wanna wear it? I'm gonna, I'm, I can wear it as much as I want. The people up here wear hats and stuff. So actually, I'm not gonna tell you. I can keep this hat on. Next morning, I'll say Robert's a piece of shit. So anyhow.
Now, no, actually I'm going to, or what? It's my fucking right. It's my fucking right. So you had the point to shut this up. You had the point to stop this. No, I don't have to take it, Cal. So you had, shut the fuck up. Um anyhow, so we had, you had a chance to settle this. You got up here, you had a meeting before the last supervisors meeting. To, to talk to us and you tell us you wanna settle and you wanna see why I'm fucking mad. Because you tell us you wanna settle. You sit up here and tell us when to settle. You say, have your council read out, reach out to our council. Guess what? Your council's MI fucking A all the fucking time, eating fucking bonbons, the fat fuck. Shut the fuck up. Shut the fuck up, Caitlyn. Fucking Caitlyn Jenner's ass. Anyhow, anyhow, and you. Shut the fuck up, you stupid fuck. Yeah, anyhow, so then, you know, and then, and then we wait for three weeks. And then you say nothing. We get nothing but fucking crickets. I come back to this meeting, you have another executive session before that meeting. To discuss the executive session that you had before the last meeting. Then again, wasting time and public fucking interest, yet again. And then you get all the way to here, we get to the meeting and then you sit up here and you, you little fuck. You sit up here and you tell us, oh, we're gonna have our council do, you know why? Because you're too big of a fucking pussy to say it, your fucking self, you little fucking bitch. You get the fuck up, you can get the fuck up and you can fucking sit there and say it, but you wait to have fucking Ron. Tell our council the fucking two days later that you know what? Your settlement is no settlement. You know why? Cause you're a fucking pussy, Jacob. You're a fucking pussy. Ah, no, I'm fine. No, and actually, and if you sit there, you sit there and you could have settled, you could have stopped this. Now the township and the taxpayers are going to be fucking paying for the fucking lawsuit after I lose this. You guys are going to fucking lose and you fucking know it. You're a fucking pussy, Robert, you little fucking bitch. You little fucking bitch, keep fucking poking, you fucking.
God, what the fuck you looking at? Fucking slug?
Jacob, you can stop all this.
You all should be fucking ashamed of yourself, especially you, you little fucking pussy.
Yep, keep letting this go.
And for you to fucking say it.
This is on you now, Jacob.
False accusation, knowing they weren't gonna do it, a little fucking stunt before Jacob's fucking shitty reelection. Fuck you. Fuck you, Michael, you fucking arrogant, dumb motherfucker. Fuck you, fuck your business, fuck everything about you. Why the fuck wouldn't you fucking come up and fucking, you still won't fucking meet us? You still won't fucking meet us. None of you, you all of us have us fucking blocked on everything, because you can't handle the truth and accountability. You can't handle the truth and accountability. What else has the fucking public been here for in the past three fucking years? Three years, you fucks, I've been dealing with this and you wonder why I'm fucking mad? You wonder why I'm fucking mad? The kid who's never had a fucking job is gonna tell me how to fucking live? The fucking deck kid is gonna tell me what's good for me and what's good for all of you? Are you fucking dumb? This motherfucker couldn't get a job. He had to get elected and appoint himself a fucking job. Because he's a degenerate fucking piece of shit who doesn't have the public in fucking mind. None of you have the public in fucking mind. None of you. And how, anything we do, she's gonna fucking wait seven days to respond that she needs, it's under thirty days to fucking deny it and then act like her fucking job's hard. You're all fucking pathetic and over fucking paid. Fuck all of you. And you wanna say something, Michael? I'm sure you don't, because uh, once again, you get a fucking response, because you keep poking the fucking bear and wonder why the fuck you guys get this? It's gonna only get fucking worse. It's only getting fucking worse from here on out. Fuck all that. You wanted to fucking settle. We've been trying to be fucking nice. Guess what I'm gonna do? I'm gonna ride every fucking day. And guess where I'm gonna ride? Everywhere that's not a motocross track. And guess who's not gonna catch me? You motherfuckers. Cause guess what? This is state police. That's the biggest fucking joke. Call the state police, they're here in an hour and fucking half. An hour and a half. So you're gonna call the state police, because I'm riding somewhere on township property and you think you're gonna catch me? Oh my God, it's even greater, because my shit just got silent. You'll never find me. And I'll just be still doing the same fucking thing. Everywhere but there, everywhere but there, the streets, anywhere I want. You don't want us to ride in one tiny spot. Thanks for opening the spot up. No one wants to fucking settle with you guys anymore, because you're unreasonable. You're fucking unreasonable. Every fucking settlement has been unfucking reasonable. That's why you get the response you guys fucking get. Every fucking settlement you get is a fucking slap in the face and actually makes everyone fucking matter. Because we shouldn't have to fucking settle with you guys. We shouldn't have to do this. Because we're legally allowed to do this. Of course, the little fucking bitch Robert walks the fuck out, because. Guess what? He's the one who fucking told me I can fucking do it. That little fucking tiny, tiny, tiny little fucking man is the one who told me I can fucking do it. The one I told, I'm sorry, I fucked up your interview time. But as, as finally, it's good that channel thirteen sticks around for public comment for once, because we know they're in your back pocket as well. And um, so. What the fuck are you guys gonna do? Obviously fucking nothing. So get ready, it's gonna be a long fucking road. And guess what? When you guys fucking lose this, my goal is to bankrupt the fucking township. I'm going to bankrupt the township so fucking bad that everything gets fucking reduced.
Very community minded.
I don't give a fuck. Fuck you, community minded. You see the community here, you dumb fuck. You fucking community minded. Look at you, you're community minded, you fucking piece of shit. Look at you, and you're gonna sit up there and fucking smirk at me with your smug ass fucking face.
Respond right now.
You're fucking garbage, dude. You're fucking garbage. Everything about you is fucking garbage. And I'm sorry you have to sit up here through it, fucking Michael. At least you guys are man enough to fucking sit up here.
Michael is actually nice enough to explain things and be very transparent.
No, you get a smart fucking snide remark from this little fucking pussy. Fuck you, Jager.
Good wins. Stop the bullshit, bring the track back.
Probably said it nicer, but I do wanna say like, he makes a lot of valid points. If you read between the profanity, I don't think they should, it should have come off this way. Um, but I do think in between the profanity, there's a lot of valid points. And it would never have gotten there if you would, would have just took a few minutes to listen to us. As a community, who you represent.
You poked the bear the sooner you got it. Years, for years.
Well, the meeting was already done, but glad everyone was able to witness that.
Well, you guys know what you're doing? You know what you're doing, just stop the bullshit already. You don't wanna hear it, right? You don't wanna go through this, then just stop the bullshit. How long does it take? They can ride or they can't ride, Jacob. It's that simple. And Michael, whoever's sitting up there, it's that simple.